Brookhaven Borough Council meeting. What's wrong?
Nothing good.
Are you recording?
Yes.
Then what are you throwing your arms up for?
I asked you to tell me when you were gonna start.
Okay, well, you should know me by now.
Yeah, we do.
All right. Let the November 2020 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting come to order. Please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing, Miss, Madam Mayor. Will you give us the memorials?
Yes, let's have a moment of silence for our deceased residents for the month of October 2020. Diane O'Donnell. Lucy Dona. Nancy Smalley. Paul Metzger. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Boyle, will you give us the roll call?
Mr. Heller?
President.
This is Booth.
President.
This is Heller. Mayor Leslie?
Present.
Mr. Vasquez? Mr. Papas?
Present.
Mr. Whitby?
Present.
Mr. Will?
Here.
Mr. Patani?
Present.
Mr. Wilber?
Here.
No, I just, yeah, I have one thing on Mr. Vasquez's participation, yeah.
You wanna go ahead now?
Yes, go ahead. So, the record is clear. Councilman Vasquez is present this evening and participating via telecommunications device. And I want to make clear for the record that those council members who cannot be in attendance at a public meeting due to a work commitment or a medical condition, the Pennsylvania Borough Code does authorize participation by means of telecommunications devices, such as telephones or computer terminals, which permit, at a minimum, audio communication between locations. The telecommunications device used by a member of council not physically present at the meeting must permit him or her to hear the comments and votes of the other members of council who are physically present, as well as to speak to and hear the comments of the public who are physically present at the meeting. The participation by Councilman Vasquez in this evening's Borough Council meetings does, in fact, comply with the terms and conditions of the Pennsylvania Borough Code.
Thank you, sir. As everyone knows, a council vacancy was created by the promotion of Councilwoman Denise Leslie to the position of mayor. So, we advertised and received 11 applications for the vacant position. So, right now, I will ask for a nomination for the vacancy of the position of councilperson.
I'm gonna nominate Michael Gilroy for the vacant council position.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Wills, this must be, um, they must be appointed by resolution. Will you read the resolution, please, and we will adopt it then?
Yes, I have a resolution for Borough Council's consideration this evening. It is a resolution of the Borough Brookhaven, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, filling the vacancy in the office of councilmember. Whereas, by correspondence dated October 13th, 2020, Council Vice President Denise Leslie of Brookhaven Borough submitted a letter of resignation as a member of Brookhaven Borough Council. And whereas, said letter made her resignation effective October the 14th, 2020. And whereas, the Borough Council of Brookhaven Borough, at their special public meeting on October 14th of 2020, accepted said resignation. And whereas, Article 9, Section 901 of the Pennsylvania Borough Code entitled Vacancies in Office requires that the Borough Council fill such a vacancy within 30 days by appointing a registered elector of the Borough by resolution. And whereas, the Borough Council has determined that Michael Gilroy is the most qualified candidate for that position. Now, therefore, be it resolved this 9th day of November 2020 that the Brookhaven Borough Council hereby appoints Michael Gilroy to fill the existing council vacancy for Brookhaven Borough with said term of office to expire on or about December 31st of 2021, resolved this 9th day of November 2020. If it is the pleasure of Borough Council to adopt such a resolution, a motion would be in order.
Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Gilroy, please step forward. Madam Mayor, please do the honors. You can change your mind. This is your last call. Are you good? Okay, you're good.
Yeah, I wanna get, yeah, get your children up there.
All right, John, get some.
She's gonna say thank you right now.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, County of Delaware, Loyalty, Oden. Aye. Aye, Michael Gilroy. Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend.
Aye, Michael Gilroy. Solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties as a Brookhaven Borough Councilman with the Delaware.
I will discharge the duties of the Brookhaven Borough Councilman with the Delaware.
With this my hand and official seal on this 9th day of November 2020. Thank you.
Take your seat, sir.
He was able to be down behind you, so I know John misses picture.
That was my first swearing in, so.
Good job.
How you doing? Yes.
Strike one item from the agenda. We are moving the vote for Council Vice President to the December meeting. Get Mr. Gilroy some time to get to know us a little better. Mrs. Ford, we're gonna put you before public discussion, if you'd like to go. Good to see you again, it's been a while.
Good to see everyone.
Lou? Yep. A little short. Hi, it's great to see everyone this evening for the Coburn Elementary School report. I'm happy to report, we had a Brookhaven Fire Department visit. So, thank you for the Brookhaven, to the Brookhaven Fire Department for curating safety videos for Coburn Elementary students at each grade level. This enabled our children to access fire safety lessons virtually. And thank you for visiting our school two days in a row so the children could benefit from an in-person, socially distant visit. Students were very excited to actually say hello and see the firefighters and the trucks after learning about fire safety. The Fire Department also provided coloring books and badges. Fire Prevention Week this year looked a little different, but it was very effective and greatly appreciated. Thank you to the Brookhaven Fire Department. We also celebrated Red Ribbon Week. Coburn Elementary staff taught lessons on the importance of drug-free lifestyle during Red Ribbon Week that were developed by our school counselors. Students and staff wore red on their in-person cohort days to show support. And Coburn PTL provided red bracelets to remind students to be drug-free. We had a terrific drive-in movie night. We're looking for different events that we can have with our children and our families to really, you know, hopefully let our kids still have a little bit of fun since so much has been, you know, taken away at this point from all of our children. But we had a great drive-in movie night. The Coburn Elementary families enjoyed the movie night sponsored by the PTL. It was a professional setup. It was probably a 32-foot screen, great sound system. It was a lot of fun. They had two movies to pick from. We did two movies, one at 5:30, one at 7:30. And thank you for, to the, I'm sorry. Thank you to the Brookhaven Police Department for checking in throughout the evening to ensure all was going well. It was, it was a really nice night. We're also having a food drive this month. Coburn Student Council is collecting non-perishable canned goods starting November 6th through November 16th. Bins are located in the school lobby for all who would like to donate. The food collection, of course, will benefit our local city team branch. And just looking ahead, our Pendelco instructional plan, I just wanted to report out on this, of course, because it's so important. With growing discussion and local news reports of increased COVID-19 virus cases in Delaware County, there has been speculation about whether our school districts plan to move forward, move from their current hybrid programs to an all-virtual format. Pendelco will remain in the hybrid instructional model at this time, and no changes are scheduled or offerings are currently planned. So, there's nothing changing at this time. While it's true that our region is experiencing increases in COVID cases, the increase, the increases in transmissions are occurring outside of school. We are working very hard at school with all children to ensure safety precautions are taken. While, while a very small number of students and/or staff have experienced exposure outside of school, due to the vigilance and consistent efforts of students, staff, and parents, there remain no known cases of linked transmission cases in which an individual is infected by another student while at school. That's not occurring at this time in our buildings. We will continue to follow the Pendelco Health and Safety Plan, which has been very effective in keeping our numbers low. Any considerations to close buildings? Although the COVID trends within our schools are currently favorable, some staff and students have asked, you know, what factors would be considered in any decision to return to an all-virtual format, should that need to occur in the near future? The following factors would be primary considerations for any change. It would be a possible mandate or directive from the Department of Health, Chester County Health Department, or PA Department of Education. The presence of substantial confirmed and established linked transmissions within our schools that begin to occur. Evidence of far-reaching spread of the disease throughout the community, which would no longer be effectively contact traced by the Chester County Department of Health. And a potential staffing shortage due to regional spikes in quarantine requirements, which could prevent us from properly implementing our health and safety plan. And I will reiterate, as I did at the October meeting, I think that you would all be very proud of the children and how they are handling the situation in our schools. I can speak for Coburn Elementary School. And children are resilient. And I wish that I could take you all in there and show you the five-year-olds who are wearing their masks all day, who are following all of our safety protocols that are in place, hand sanitizing, washing their hands. You know, we have paws on the wall, there are six feet, they know how to social distance out at recess, at lunch. So, you should all be very proud of your children in this community. They really are doing an amazing job. And thank you all for your support. And thank you again to the Brookhaven Fire Department and Police Department. And also, on behalf of Coburn Elementary School, congratulations to Mayor Leslie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone for public discussion? No? Chief Montella?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, council, mayor, and public. Brookhaven Fire Company's October 2020 Fire Report. For the year, we had 30 fire incidents in the borough, 210, nine fire, 269 mutually, calls 41 drills for a total of 550 fire and rescue events. Our loss on structure so far this year was 33,000. Loss on contents was 30,000. We had a total loss of $63,000 and $1,050,000 of property in danger. No firefighter injuries or civilian injuries for the month. We had one firefighter injury for the year and one civilian injury. Our manpower status was 60 calls, 13 average firefighters who have been served for 620 hours, 6,275 hours for the year. Our training was board training sessions, 22 average firefighters, 242 hours. Fogging up. Our training for the year was 2,189 hours. Brookhaven Fire Company responded to a following incidents in Brookhaven Borough. We had two gas leaks inside a residence at the 4,800 Block of Shepherd Street and the 3,400 Block of Victor Avenue. Six auto accidents, 352 Brookhaven Road, 352 and Whitley Road, 4509 Chandler Drive, 3,800 Block of Edgemont, 4206 Edgemont, and 5,075 Edgemont Avenue. Assisted Chester Township Fire Department on building fire at 2730 Bethel Road. Assisted Upland Fire Company on accident, 799 Upland Avenue. And we, an accident at 95 South at the Rear Crozier Hospital. Assisted Upland on vehicle fire at 521 24th Street. Assisted Assed Township Fire Department on building fire at 12 Convent Road. Assisted Chester City Fire Department on a vehicle accident with entrapment at 95 North at Chestnut Street. Assisted Rocky Run Fire Company on a building fire at 1118 Baltimore Pike. Assisted Parkside Fire Company on building fire at Cisco Court. Our monthly training was, we had flood water rescue training class, and we had live water training in the LA Fitness Pool. They were gracious enough to let us use their pool for the evening. We had a class where we got a certification from an instructor on water rescue operations, and we had some vehicle rescue training. Our COVID-19 update reports were submitted to council and the mayor. We are experiencing an increase in COVID-19 transports. We had four transports as of the last report I submitted. We did actually pick up a couple more over the weekend. We had eight personnel that were notified by Riddle and Crozier Hospitals of possible exposure to positive patients. Our employees were notified and paperwork was documented of possible exposure to the EMT crews. Brookhaven Fire Company went to Coburn Elementary School, Christian Academy School, and the Early Learning Daycare for outside fire prevention training for the children with COVID-19 social distancing rules followed for our members and their, their schoolchildren as well. It was a little different. We had virtual training, like Mrs. Ford said. And we submitted, Brookhaven Fire Company submitted an narrative paperwork to, for a grant for a 2020 AFG grant. We're trying to get a new 6,000 PSI breathing air compressor and a 5,500-pound SCBA fuel station. We're applying for this grant. Our current equipment is over 20 years old. Our October EMS report calls for the year for the ambulance, 1,464 calls. In October, the ambulance answered 198 calls. Of those, we transported 134 people to the hospital. 77 of those calls were ALS transport with a paramedic, and 121 of them calls were BLS transports. And that concludes my report. And congratulations to Councilman Gilroy.
Thank you very much. Thank you, chief. John, get this paperwork. Yep. Mr. Wills?
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First item on my report concerns the Brookhaven Glen Development. This is an 84-unit multifamily, 55-and-over community that is located near Edgemont Avenue and Radio Park Lane. The developer has, in fact, executed a developers' agreement, an improvement security agreement, as well as an agreement for the reimbursement for professional fees. It is expected that the developer will be making application for a grading permit later this month, and I expect an application for construction permits to commence shortly thereafter. Second item concerns Arbor Developers. This is a two-lot subdivision on Zuer Street. The subdivision plan was reviewed by the Planning Commission at its meeting on October 20th and recommended changes or communicated to the developer. I did communicate with the developer earlier today with regard to those revised plans. And it is expected that the Planning Commission will undergo further review of those plans at its upcoming meeting next Tuesday, November 17th, 2020. Next item on my agenda concerns the Verizon Cellular Communications Tower that, of course, the borough leases at its property on Bridgewood Road. The communications tower people had recommended some changes to the lease agreement after going back and forth with the people at Verizon. It is my recommendation, and Borough Council has accepted it, that we are opposed to any proposed lease amendments, and that has been communicated to the good people at Verizon. Next item on my agenda concerns the property on the 700 Block of Marshall Road. This is a property that, again, has some deep-seated violations of the International Property Maintenance Code. I have filed a complaint in equity and a petition for preliminary injunction against the property owner in the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas. This is scheduled for a hearing before Judge Barry C. Dozer of the court on November 18th of 2020. So, that'll be next week. And I expect Code Enforcement Officer John Grant to accompany me to that hearing and provide relevant testimony to the court with regard to the multiple property maintenance violations occurring at that particular residence. Next item on my agenda concerns the Pando Property Group. Again, this is a minor seven-lot subdivision at Brookhaven Road and Arlington Avenue. I've been working with the engineer. We've had some issues regarding certificate of occupancy issues where the developer has been lapsed in that particular requirement and obligation. And I think we have put him on the proper path. And I've also been in communication with this developer regarding the status of lot number eight of that development. This is supposed to be a lot that will be deeded to the boroughs, a deed of dedication for open space. And I expect to receive that deed probably sometime in the early part of 2021. And lastly, again, I would congratulate our new councilperson. Welcome aboard, and I look forward to working with you as we proceed here in Brookhaven Borough. Other than that, I can report general progress, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Wills. Madam Mayor?
Yes, I have a couple things to report. Our shredding event, I have the numbers. We had 73 people, and we collected 3,140 pounds of paper. The trunk-or-treat was a success, even though it was different this year. It was fun. Everyone enjoyed themselves. I would like to congratulate our emergency management coordinator, Steve and Aaron Schultz, as they had a baby boy in October. And I also want to wish our veterans a Happy Veterans Day on Wednesday. And also, my congratulations, looking forward to working with you. End of my report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief Zebly?
Come on down.
Good evening, sir.
Hey, guys, don't worry. All right, for the month of October 2020, the Brookhaven Police were assigned 516 CAD assignments to DOT COM. Of those, the most noteworthy incidents were: one aggravated assault, one death investigation, two vehicle thefts or unauthorized use of automobiles, four retail thefts, three thefts from unlocked automobiles during overnight, four other types of thefts, one attempted theft, one fraud report, three criminal mischiefs, two harassment complaints, two narcotics arrests, one public intoxication, one terroristic threats complaint, two harassment reports, two trespassing reports, four mental health incidences. Eighteen suspicious conditions were investigated. Brookhaven Police responded to 30 disturbances or domestic disputes, which were resolved. Responded to eight alarms, 10 hazardous conditions, and we took 23 vehicle accident reports during the month of October. We also assisted other departments on 20 occasions. One arrest warrant was served. In total, 12 adults were arrested, one juvenile was arrested. 21 citations were issued or filed, and eight warnings were issued. Total loss for victims from thefts was approximately $31,445. Recovery at this point is only $2,164. There was protest incidences throughout the month, and they all went peaceful, as usual. In October, there was an exposure issue during an incident with our members of our police department, and a handful of us had to be quarantined. From that quarantine, no one tested positive after the quarantine period. From that, we put a more stringent COVID mitigation order in place to make sure that doesn't happen again or less likely to happen. Outside of that month of October, we just had an officer test positive last week for COVID. Another officer is, was sick, was home ill last week. He tested negative so far, and he's waiting on a second test. However, he's saying that he feels fine now, so. Also, during the month of October, we had, we interviewed eight applicants for position of part-time police officer. Background checks are beginning this week, as we have polygraphs this week. Have addressed a few minor personnel issues during the month of October to improve patrol officer safety, efficiency of the department, and to improve relations with the community. Also, Part-Time Officer Richard Kleimer resigned from the police department and is retiring from police work. Officer Kleimer was part-time for 11 years and is now gonna focus on his growing family and his full-time job. As far as training for the month of October, Officer Wetton conducted firearms training and qualifications for himself and Officer Barth. In-service training was conducted in October for use of force, which includes training and certification with pepper spray and baton. Certifications will be completed in November, hopefully, knock on wood. For the remaining officers for baton and pepper spray, it's just a few left of us to get all certified. Officer Wetton also attended eight hours of training with SWAT. Officer Tia Filak attended 16 hours of active shooter response training. I. Officer Zebly attended a 40-hour course on, for online, online for supervisor school through Penn State. In total, approximately 134 man-hours of training was received by department members during the month of October. DEASification training is being pushed back because of COVID, and we're seeking out sensitivity training as well for our officers. Department shotguns, as we spoke last month, we're converting them to beanbag shells only. Beanbag rounds are ordered. We're still waiting for the delivery, and we have an instructor set up to certify our officers. Policy will be developed, reviewed, and adopted. Once implemented, another layer of less-than-lethal force options will be available to our officers. And also, for training coming up, Officer Subers and myself are enrolled in Field Training Officer School in December. For community relations, Officer Tia Filak met with the Girl Scout group outside. Were in one of their meetings to talk about becoming a police officer. Detective Havick also conducted a virtual tour of the police station with the Cub Scouts. That's all I have for my remarks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
We're gonna jump.
We're going to jump ahead in the council reports to Mr. Vasquez. Go ahead, Hector. Are you there?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First off, I want to congratulate Mr. Gilroy on making it up here with us to counsel. It'll be a pleasure to work with you in the future. Secondly, for the Public Works Report, I have two or one big item.
I think your dogs are trying to make a motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have one big motion I want to make, and that's a temporary hiring of two candidates, a one Justin Treaty. Let me, I believe I said that name right there with me. One second. No, I'm sorry, not Justin, Joshua. Joshua Trusty, I'm sorry. And a Robert Saleen. They will be working with the Public Works Department at a rate of 1450 an hour. And again, this is a temporary position, and they will only be called in when there is work needed for them to be there. They are not part of the union. This is a temporary position that would more than likely end along the lines of the end of March, unless, you know, we get some crazy winter snowstorm. So I'd like to entertain a motion.
Who wants the motion?
I'll make a motion.
And that's for the hiring of two seasonal Public Works employees at the rate of 1450 per hour, most likely to end in March, if I had it right. Mrs. Fuchs with the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
All right. Just a heads up, we're going to try and start then as soon as possible to assist with the leaf collection.
Which begins Monday, right?
Yes. Secondly, the Public Works Report for October. The Public Works Department repaired the head wall at the Borough Hall retention basin on Cambridge. We received our sewer jet trailer that we've been awaiting for. We should have training starting shortly on that from the company. The roof was leaking in Building Two in this sewer treatment plant that was addressed. Storm sewer drains were cleaned throughout the borough. Other than parks, we added one security camera at Sampson. The normal building routine checks at Memorial, Sampson, Eaton, and Durkin were done. Winter maintenance is completed in all the parks now, and these buildings are shut down for the season. The locks will be replaced, and we're waiting on materials to arrive to start that. The grass bedding season is coming to a close, unless this warm weather keeps up, which who knows what happens. We moved some diamond techs from the fields to the garage to be used in multiple locations. We've completed our branch and limb chipping for 2020. There were 67 stops in the fourth quarter. Total appointments for the year were 186. There was painting done on the curb and no parking signs at the Borough Hall for where the election box was. Potholes were filled. They used eight bags at 350 pounds. The year-to-date total was 88 bags at 4,452 pounds. The Nancy Harvin plaque was installed by the Public Works team on the walking trail. And we are now preparing the equipment for the leaf program, which is going to start, as you said, this Monday coming up. There were 33 PA1 call tickets answered. Year-to-date total, 588. And the crew attended the 24th Annual Workplace Safety Committee Training Seminar. And that's all I have.
Are you going to hang around or are you going to go?
I'll hang around.
All right. Well, I hope you feel better.
Feel better, Hector.
Go kick COVID's ass, would you?
I will. Thank you.
All right. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the October council meeting.
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I need a motion to merge the Brookhaven Hometown Hero Banner Committee into the Veterans Committee. Consolidate the committees.
You want to change the name?
No. We're basically merging the Hometown Hero Banner Committee into the Veterans Committee. The Veterans Committee will remain. We're combining the two.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
And we have a little bit of a reorg, Mr. Gilroy joining, so we're going to put three members of council on the Veterans Committee, because the banner committee alone needs at least two members of council. So you'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So kind of dissolve the Hometown Hero Banner Committee and put it in with the Veterans Committee. And as for the committee reorg, I'm not going to go through the entire committee list. We're just going to take care of the committees left vacant by Mayor Leslie's promotion. Mayor Leslie chaired the police, fire, recycling, veterans, and emergency management. I'm not missing any, am I, Mayor?
No.
Okay. So I ask for interest. Mrs. Heller chose police committee and emergency management. Mrs. Fuchs will take recycling. Mr. Vasquez, Mr. Gilroy, and myself will chair the Veterans Committee as a group. Did not miss anything, did I?
I don't believe so.
That's it. And I have an executive session to announce. Council met on Sunday, 11/1/2020, 8:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Purpose was council vacancy interviews. What we did was we got all 11 out interviewed in a row. What a great Sunday that was. Spending it with Ms. Awikie made it especially fruitful. And I want to thank everyone that was involved with the truck-or-treat, gave us some sort of normalcy. And I want to thank everyone that is involved with the upcoming Holiday Parade Committee, and it'll give us some kind of normalcy. Thank you, Mrs. Rifford. Thank you, Mr. Donaway. We got some good news today. We have a vaccine that was potentially 90% effective. Now the Fed has to review it. That is, it's remarkable news. It's the best news we've had since the pandemic started, so we expect good things out of that. Now we just have to get people to stick it in their arms and take the risk. I, for one, would be first in line. It's fantastic news. It really is. It'll hopefully get the country back to normal, and more important, Brookhaven back to normal. I believe that is all that I have for tonight. Yep, that's it. Mrs. Awikie?
Yes, the first thing I do want to do is congratulate Mike Gilroy, our new council member. It was very nice to meet his lovely family before the meeting, and I wish him every success on the Borough Council. I do want to make a motion to approve all the bills on our bill list for November, so we can get the bills paid out this week.
Who's got the motion?
I'll take it. Make a motion.
Why don't you second one? Gilroy, do something.
I'll second the motion.
There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good job, Gilroy.
Okay, the next item I have is the budget, which most people are interested in. The 2021 budget, Julyla and I have been working on it for many months, and recently I've gotten input from the engineer and the council members and the Public Works Department for these budgets. And I have actually gotten the preliminary budget out to council for their review. At the workshop this month, November 23, 7 p.m., I will be reading the budget and going through it line by line for all of the different budgets. And by the December 7 meeting, we will have that in a final budget form, so we can have it for public inspection on December 8 to December 21. December 21, we are scheduled to adopt all the budgets and the resolutions that go with it, so that'll be the scheduling. And that's, so you have an update. That's all I really have right now. So we'll be busy between now and December 21st.
I don't think Mr. Gilroy has a report yet, correct? Mr. Pappas?
I have a little thing, yeah.
You want to say something? Go ahead, stuff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm honored and humbled by the faith and trust the council has shown by selecting me as the next councilman of Brookhaven Borough. I accept the responsibility that council has bestowed upon me. I'm looking forward to working with each and one of you and our staff for the betterment of Brookhaven and our citizens. It will be my honor to now show my neighbors of Brookhaven my dedication, respect, loyalty to our community. Our society is in uncharted waters. How we interact with one another has changed. How we communicate with one another has changed. How we embrace one another has changed. But one thing has not changed is the need for one another. Our community must forge together and adapt to keep the familiar, loving, and peaceful community sense that we all cherish. All I ask from the residents is to never miss an opportunity to simply wave to one another. The hand-waving means so much more than it ever did. I know in our community, it means hi, we are in this together, we are stronger together, we can do anything together. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank my parents, and most of all, my wonderful wife, Jennifer. I share this and every accomplishment squarely and equally with her. I could never have been the person I am today without you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome aboard again.
Thank you.
Mr. Pappas?
Congratulations, Mike. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. The Workplace Safety Meeting was held on October 23. The meeting was held in a Zoom format, but it did represent the 24th Annual Workplace Safety Training Seminar. Although the seminar was closed for participation, the guest speakers promoted their experience in the related fields of insurance protection. Hopefully, we'll be able to resume our regular meetings with the borough employees. Second, also I have, there's a vacancy in the Planning Commission. Anybody that's interested should have the basic skills in reading drawings and specifications. They should be able to read and interpret building codes, should have some kind of knowledge of construction. Should also be a knowledge of the planning process. Should have an interest in providing or improving Brookhaven's overall appearance. Civil, engineer, or any type of architectural degree preferred is not required. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Heller?
Can I interrupt you for one second? George, if you can email me that, so I can get it on the website.
Yes, I will. I want to find out about the term, when it expires. So if there are volunteers, there is an expiration for it. I was going to think it'd help me out.
Okay.
I called on you.
Oh.
I think I did. Did I not?
First, I wanted to welcome my.
I didn't listen to whom either.
And.
You shouldn't.
Congratulate you as well. So just a few things. The Technology Committee is meeting this Thursday at 7 p.m. Not sure if it's going to be in-person or Zoom yet. I think we still need to discuss that.
I would prefer, speaking for myself, that you do as many Zoom as possible with COVID just being about everywhere right now, all of a sudden, but.
We'll update if it's going to be in-person or Zoom. The Police Committee met on 10/29 to discuss personnel issues. We did talk about the trunk-or-treat, but I just want to talk a little bit more about it. The Rec Board did an amazing job, trying to bring a little normalcy to what's going on in the world today. The Rec Board, along with some volunteers, actually packed 270 treat bags for the kids. It was great. It was a drive-through. We had actually 205 people registered, and we had actually distributed 212 bags that day. I want to thank Bateman Funeral Home. They actually brought out the hearse, which was kind of cool for the kids to see. We also had the Brookhaven Fire Department and the ambulance, so thank you, chief. We also had participation from the Brookhaven Police Department. We also got a lot of candy from Walgreens and CVS. And we also had participation from Lowe's. So I want to thank our businesses for participating as well, because it was something that was definitely needed, I think. So that was held actually on the 31st in the Coburn parking lot. And like I said, it was great and wonderful to see the kids all dressed up. Unfortunately, they were still in the cars, but we still got to see them all dressed up, which was adorable and cute. With the Rec Board, we also had a meeting, an in-person meeting, practicing social distancing on 10/29. We are looking for some members for the Rec Board, as well as alternates. So anybody that's interested, please submit their resume. They can actually drop it off at the office. The other thing I have, you're going to cover the parade, right? So the only other two things I have is, the Real Church is collecting Thanksgiving baskets up until Sunday, November 15. They're looking to try to feed 100 families for Thanksgiving. So anyone that is interested in dropping off any food between now and then, please do at the Real Church. It's located on Edwards. And also, just so you're aware from a business perspective, Starbucks is also doing specific projects for the Wounded Warriors. They're doing Toys for Tots, and they're also doing for our Four-Legged Friends, Brandywine's Valley SPCA. So any donations back to the businesses, they're going back to our community, which we grateful and really, really helpful, so. And I believe that's the end of my report.
Mrs. Fuchs?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to start my report off by saying, Mike, congratulations, welcome to council. We're happy to have you. The Ordinance Committee will meet next Thursday in the council room to finalize the food truck ordinance and the permit application. And the reason why we're meeting in person is because some of my members do not have Zoom, so we can't.
I see.
And I'd rather have it, I mean, we have a lot of feedback going back and forth, so it's worth it to meet, we social distance, and everybody wears their masks, so it's not a problem. Also, we continue to evaluate old ordinances that need updating. Once the evaluation is complete, I'll inform council of those ordinances that need changing or some of them may be removed altogether. The parade is scheduled for Saturday, November 21, beginning at 2 p.m. The format has changed a bit due to COVID, but the parade route continues to remain the same. If you live on the parade route, please do not park your cars on the street from 12 noon until 4:30 p.m. There will not be a grandstand or performances at Coburn Elementary School this year. Hopefully, next year we'll go back to normal, but this year we will not have that. There may be some performances along the route. We're not going to announce where they are, because we don't want people to congregate there, but don't be surprised if you see a group performing in front of you while the parade's going by. We're asking everyone to please wear your masks if you're going to be watching the parade, if you're not going to be watching it from your door, and to try to social distance during the parade. Again, it's 2 p.m., Saturday, November 21. Members will meet at Our Lady of Charity Church. I believe it's any time after 12:30?
1:00.
1:00, after 1:00. Also, community news, the Chip Vaccination Clinic is still scheduled for May 18, 2021. I don't know if that's going to change or not, but as of right now, it is still scheduled for May 18. That's all my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fuchs. We already had Mr. Vasquez. Mr. Catania?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just have a few things this evening. The first one is the 2018 Small Water and Sewer Grant. The borough have received this funding from the state for Brookhaven Road sanitary sewer rehabilitation. Those funds need to be expended by June of next year. I want to ask authorization from council to advertise that project.
I'll make a motion.
Give me a second.
I'll second.
I fell asleep, and you guys, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries.
Next up, when they were replacing the flooring in this building, they noticed water in the break room. Checked that, and the pointing in the block wall was deteriorated to a point where water is penetrating through the wall. Going to answer ratification for that repair that cost $2,450.
Motion?
Still moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries.
And the final thing for council would be the traffic signal maintenance contract. We received proposals for the operation and maintenance of the traffic signals in the borough, and are going to recommend award to signal service in the amount of $1,150 per month, plus their bid unit prices for emergency service. We received two bids, and that was the lowest bid.
I'll make the motion.
Give me a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Could I just ask a question?
Go ahead, Ms.
Is that contract for one year or more for a signal service?
It's bid as a one-year contract with optional one-year extensions for the year 2022 and 2023.
That's fine.
And they have no increase in cost over those periods, so we'll review that next year at this time.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Mr. Leslie?
A couple things, Mr. President. Over 4,001 Edgemont Avenue, you have the old beer distributor, got a nail salon and a massage piler going in over there. The 4,800 block of Edgemont Avenue, that's the shops of Brookhaven. Working with Morgan over there, we keep. We keep getting the low-water alarm for the fire suppression systems over there. They replace it a couple times. We're going to try to figure something out over there. She has a new contractor coming in. Forty-four-twenty-two Edgemont, that's the Duncan. That's coming along really well. He might be ready for inspection maybe next Tuesday or Wednesday, he's saying, for the final for the inspectors. Twenty-four Radio Park Lane, that pastor over there is bringing that building up the code. Eight West Brookhaven Road, working with that realtor over there to get the walkway behind those stores cleaned out. It's kind of blocked with a brush right now. Forty-ninety-eight Edgemont Avenue, received that email from, I guess, Matt and Mr. Wells about that right-to-know. We're not going to give them that right-to-know because they're trying to avoid an inspection over there, we believe. And then over here at the thirty-seven-hundred block Edgemont Avenue, the Pep Boys again. They're piling tires up in the back and trying to get those removed. Quite a few tires back there. That's a no-no, so that's the end of my report there, Mr. Heller.
Mr. Leslie, can you please--
Thanks, sir.
The very beginning of your report, where you said the source-- Where's that going?
Four thousand one Edgemont.
And where's that near? I don't--
That's the Old Brookhaven Beer Distributor.
Okay.
Or maybe the check casher for you, maybe.
Okay.
Next to the Texaco. Wither Without, there's a bunch of places.
Texaco, is it nineteen ninety-three? I'm just playing with you. You're talking about the Wither Without, the newer building, the gray building.
Yeah.
Next to the Brewties.
Yeah.
It used to be the Reader's.
Where the printer is.
At this point, I forget. What did you say is going in there?
Another nail salon, and I was there on Sunday.
Oh, okay.
Putting with four or five rooms in there. Waiting for prints to come back from the architect so they can submit to the Borough, but they were in there doing demo work. I stopped to make sure they had permits. They did come see Matt. They took down-- It's a shell now. They took down all the walls and everything.
Oh, I see.
They're moving stuff, so they did say they went to see an architect, and they're waiting on prints, but they were in there working, you know, getting the old tile and up off the floor and what have you.
That'll be to them. Did they have permits?
Yeah, they did. Four thousand one Edgemont.
Mr. Hampton, do you have anything?
I'm just like, you know, I stopped there. I see something going on, newsy. I stopped to see what's going on. So now the Borough knows, but they did say they talked to Matt. They asked him, and they said, yeah, we went to see the young kid of the Borough, Matt.
All right, we'll figure it out. Mr. Hampton, you don't have a report? No report? Okay. You're going to need a mic if it's lengthy. Wipe it down, for God's sake, please.
Had a hundred and fifty-one telephone calls last month, but if a telephone call comes up on my-- On my-- And most of them are here on my phone. Comes up unknown, I do not respond to you. I don't answer it. I get too much spam and ridiculous things going on. Even some of them that have names, I call them back. No such number. I mean, this is just a pain in the neck. Fourteen permits worship last month. Two of them this morning. I did two more this morning for sheds. Like Charlie said, people going in. I know nothing. He's talking about people changing sides. I know nothing about that. Now, Matt hasn't told me anything, so I'll discuss it with him tomorrow and why he hasn't said something to me.
Go shake him down, would you?
Well, I know he's, you know, just into this, and it's kind of-- A lot of things are new, but I've already spoken to him about some things that he's not coming through me with, so. Can I ask Charlie a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Charles, the big dip across the street from me. Now, they came over and did the sewer, and they checked through that and ran it all the way down to Wellington. They said they wish all the sewers in Brookhaven looked like that because it's so nice, but that big dip is getting worse. And I don't want to see somebody-- Somebody's vehicle collapsing or something happen there. Do you have any idea what's causing that?
No, I've got the same information you had. The Public Works checked that sewer line and found it to be in good condition.
The sewer line's fine, they told me. And I want to ask you about that sewer.
I'll get with Dave Junior, and we'll see what--
The sewer was all nice and clean, but I also have a neighbor, when he cuts his grass, gets a nice, great, big pile, a leaf blower, puts it all down the sewer. What's our fine for that? Do you know?
Not high enough.
No, I do not. Offhand, I do not.
Okay, I don't know offhand either, but, you know, I get tired of watching it. My neighbors called me about it, saying, it's all bad what he's doing again. And I took pictures. I have it on my camera. I have pictures of it. As you all know, I carry a camera.
Sure.
With everything. I was going to turn it over to the Streets Department, let them write them a letter or go see him. Mr. Thompson went to see him once in a fortnight about it. But now I watch this big pile of grass going down there, and it's a no-no. You say anything to him, you don't-- You don't like his words that come back to you. You say anything to this gentleman.
That is a DEP violation as well as a Borough ordinance violation.
Yeah.
And the Real Bear--
He doesn't care.
Punitive measures and the punitive fines rest with the DEP.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. It's good to see you again. Mr. Wells has new business that we forgot about. Go ahead, sir.
This Wednesday, November eleventh, is Veterans Day. It is a federal holiday. It is a day we honor and celebrate those who have worn the uniform and served in the United States Armed Forces. In the increasingly cynical world that we find ourselves today, some Americans, especially those among our younger generation, may question the value of military service and ask why we so honor our veterans. The answer is a simple one and is encapsulated in a brief poem I'd like to share with everyone, and it reads as follows. It is the veteran, not the preacher, who has given us freedom of religion. It is the veteran, not the reporter, who has given us freedom of the press. It is the veteran, not the poet, who has given us freedom of speech. It is the veteran, not the campus organizer, who has given us freedom to assemble. It is the veteran, not the lawyer, who has given us the right to a fair trial. It is the veteran, not the politician, who has given us the right to vote. It is the veteran with faith in God and country who has given us all our freedoms. It is a rather compelling and thought-provoking poem. Here in the Borough Brookhaven, we are proud to have, among our elected officials, two veterans. I would ask that Mayor Denise Leslie and Councilman Hector Vasquez, please stand and be recognized.
Hector, you standing?
What's that, Mr. Wells?
I would also ask, if there are any veterans in attendance, please stand and be recognized. Thank you for your service. That is all I have.
Well said, Mr. Wells. Before we go to public discussion, I forgot to thank the other eleven candidates that applied for the position of council. In truth, all eleven were perfectly fit to serve. We had four or five standouts. Mr. Gilroy rose to the top. That is not to detract from the rest of the candidates. We thank them for their time, for interviewing with us, and their willingness to serve on this council. You know, it's not an easy job. You know, we've had a tough year. I think we've done a good job of navigating through it, but we picked a young idealist, a political candidate. Been here in the Borough for ten years. He's a former police officer. He's an honorable man. We trust him. We have full faith in him. If not for Mrs. Leslie's outstanding political resume, Mr. Gilroy might very well be the mayor right now. He applied for the mayor position, too. I don't mind saying. So we got to know him during the first round of interviews, or the mayoral, the mayoral vacancy. But we welcome you aboard. This is a hard-working council. We take our job seriously. We joke around, we have fun, but underneath it, we take it very seriously. And I think you know that now, so welcome aboard again.
Thank you very much.
With that, is there anyone for public discussion? Mr. Hampton, sir, grab a mic. Go ahead. Grab a mic, please.
Want to ask you, are you going to do a vice president of the council?
I mentioned earlier in the meeting that we are going to vote on that at the December council meeting. We wanted Mr. Gilroy some time to get to know the council. We didn't see it very fair for him to be a councilperson for ten seconds and to come up and vote.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Is there anyone else for public discussion? Going once, going twice? It was great to see everyone in person. It's my thought that we're going to play each meeting by ear. Just because there's positive vaccine data today doesn't mean that we're going to have a vaccine by Christmas. You know, it's likely four months away if the Fed signs off on it. You know, in the meantime, maybe a therapeutic can come. We would prefer to do them in person with social distancing like we did tonight. I'm sick of Zoom. I'm sure you're all sick of Zoom, except for the mute option for some people. I mean, we're really sick of Zoom. And so you can't be council president and DJ at the same time. That's what it feels like. But thanks for hanging in there with us. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Good night, everyone. Good night, Mr. Vasquez.
Good night, Hector.